Good evening, everyone. My name is Lucy Bisson and I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. Welcome to the October 21st meeting of the Planning Board. Yes, Ms. Cox, could you call the roll, please?
Absolutely. Roger Dupree?
Yeah.
Please let the record reflect that Mark Roy and Amy Smith are absent this evening. Michael Marcott?
Present.
Shannon Cox, present. Lucy Bisson?
Present.
Alex Pine?
Present.
And Penthea Burns?
Present.
Thank you.
And Gemma Mohammed is also absent.
Absolutely.
So in the event that we have two board members that are absent, Penthea will be a voting member this evening on her first night.
Congratulations.
Yes, and we really welcome you. You're getting a baptism of fire.
Thank you.
And for the record, city staff present is John Connor, Director, Planning and Code Enforcement; Shelley Norton, Deputy Director, City Planner; Craig Tebow, City Planner. Okay. Who do I dress these two now? Do I dress to Craig or to you, Shelley, or Dawn, or...
I'm sorry, what are we talking about?
Well, if I'm asking for adjustments to the agenda, or...
You can just ask staff, that's fine.
Huh?
You can ask me or just ask staff.
Okay, okay, well, staff, then. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
Are there any correspondents?
I just wanted to note two trainings that are coming up. AVCOG has their planning day on November 6th. It's up in Rumpford this year. And then the main association of planner, sorry, main municipal association has their local planning board and Board of Appeals training that they do multiple times a year. One of those is coming up on December 10th and it's a Zoom meeting. It's not in person. It's in the evening from 4:00 to 7:30. So if anyone is interested in attending either of those conferences, please let Linda know so she can register you.
Absolutely, sure. Over the weekend, I received some personal inquiries about the best way for a citizen to communicate to the Planning Board. I gave them the email addresses of all of the staff. But they had looked on the website and didn't notice kind of readily the best way to email the Planning Board. I don't know if you could both tell me what I should have done and maybe look at the website to make adjustments so that someone wanting to create correspondence for the Planning Board would know the best way to do it?
Yeah, sending it to staff is the best way. We can certainly make that known on the website.
Yeah, and maybe list the appropriate. I don't know if it was Linda as the secretary who would then... But I don't think it was clear in the Planning Board section which staff.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, thank you. And public hearings, there are none, so we will move on to other business. A discussion on an initiation of amendments to homeless shelters and the No Name Pond Overlay District, including Articles 2, definitions; 3, official map; 4, establishment of districts; 10, conditional uses; and 11, district regulations. Shelley? No, I suppose, yeah, why don't we do that? We'll do a public comment period. Typically, we restrict if three minutes. It's going to be a little lax today. If you would step up, John will be, you know, keeping the time. If you would go to the podium, give your name, address, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, Planning Board. My name's Bob McCarthy. I live at 34 Rejane Avenue. I have a real concern about eliminating the overlay district or making any huge changes to it. We've had two experiences in the past where shelters were located in residential neighborhoods and both times it was disastrous for those neighborhoods. The first one was the Armory and the whole Bates College area, including all the way over on the other side of College Street, over on White Street. The, all the neighbors experienced a lot of issues with finding needles, people trying to break into houses, stealing packages off of porches. There was a raft of issues with the Armory one. And then the other one was Ramada Inn, which was right on the outskirts of a very large residential neighborhood. And they also experienced a lot of issues with the people staying there. And I think it's very important that we keep in mind that a lot of these neighborhoods have a lot of elderly people in them. We're already going to be hitting them with the reevaluation, which is going to make it hard to stay in their homes. And then to expose them to the possibility of a shelter being in their neighborhood is, to me, it's kind of absurd. They, the shelter, there was a lot of thought process, I was part of it, that went into that overlay district. We thought it was appropriate where it's put. I don't know why I'm doing that. I'll get away from it a little more. But it steers clear of a lot of the residential neighborhoods. We tried to keep it to areas that would be conducive to shelters and to shield the pure residential neighborhoods from the possibility of being exposed to a shelter. I think it's, I think we need people standing up for the average citizen in this city and not be all gung ho on all out, you know, homeless shelter at no matter what the cost to the citizens of the city. So I hope that you will take into account the taxpayers and the citizens of this city and not expose them to unnecessary issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make some comments? Please, yeah, step ups, give your name and your address, please.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jacob Arata. I live at 3 Loon Drive on No Name Pond. I want to speak about the No Name Pond Overlay District. And we live in an old camp. It doesn't have a very real foundation. It's really just on blocks. And with our project, we'd like to replace the existing structure and get it out of the floodplain. And it seems, from my understanding, that with the current overlay district, it's more strict than shoreline zoning. So we think it would be fair to have it more in line with shoreline zoning. And we like to live in Lewiston long term and start a family here. So if that was possible, that would kind of allow us to stay here long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay. In that case, let's start with the shelter first. Shelley? Your comments?
Okay, so this evening, this agenda item is for discussion among the board as to providing direction for staff on any changes you'd like made to the zoning and land use code related to homeless shelters. The council had a workshop with staff on June 4th to discuss the overlay, where shelters are currently allowed. And then they've also had a committee that looked at the licensing for shelters. And they reviewed over two workshops the recommendations on the licensing changes. Broadly, what staff has been given for guidance from the council is that there is interest of the majority of the membership of the council to eliminate the shelter overlay and to instead have shelters allowed more broadly, but to provide buffers around some sensitive areas, be they business districts or other particular uses. So staff put together in this memo, we went through and identified which articles potentially would have changes that would need to be made for a future amendment that we would bring to you if you were to eliminate the district or make changes to it and if you were to add buffers. We had also discussed at one point in time, currently, on the zoning and land use table, the use table, where homeless shelters are listed, they're allowed as a conditional use. So if you are to extend it to additional districts, another question staff has for you is whether you want it to still require a conditional use permit and would that be in all districts? And then related to that, currently, the conditional use permit criteria is not specific to shelters. That's perfectly fine. But if the board would like to see some criteria related specifically to shelters and potential concerns with shelters, that's something for discussion. So staff put together some possible topics related to that under Article 10, conditional uses, that we can go through. And then finally, we have discussion about if you were to add buffers, some ideas for what uses might have a buffer around them. And I think that that's just really put out there for discussion for the board to have, just to give you some ideas. So I'm happy to jump in as you need me. I don't know whether you want to... The way this is broken out is by article, but it probably makes sense for you to start by having a discussion about locations for shelters and where you think it's appropriate.
Okay, yes. Mr. Marcott?
Letting co-director is going to know where I'm coming from on this. When we spoke on Friday, because I was not happy that I didn't get a packet in the mail. I'm even less happy right now that I didn't get that packet in the mail. I would have read it over the weekend where I was. The motion is to initiate a discussion. So again, on Friday, I came to the realization that we were probably just having a procedural vote tonight so that it would open up to discussion at a next meeting and with public hearing. But now we're not having a public hearing, but we're in a full-blown discussion on the topic. And I didn't have a printed version. I think I should have had a printed version if we're going to have a complete discussion on this topic. Did come here thinking that I might actually vote against this motion and I'm more committed to that position from what I'm hearing now.
Ms. Cox?
While appreciating what you're offering there, I'd love the opportunity for us to discuss it, even if it's the surface discussion that I think we had lifted up some of the comments that we heard from public comment this evening. There's a number of things that I'd love for us to be able to talk about and even ask questions among each other so that when we have a real discussion, whether it results in a second discussion or proposed changes and a public hearing in the same step. And I'm not anticipating that we're going to get there, at least on both overlay districts in the course of this evening, frankly. I'd love the opportunity to hear where our peers are, to share some comments and to give some direction on staff so that we can have some of their research and information for an informed discussion. And when I think about this as that first step, it makes me feel a little bit better about the rest of the steps to come. And I think you would add great value to tonight's conversation.
I do have questions along those lines. I just didn't think that I had to be prepared for tonight. I think I can formulate a few umbrella-type questions over the process and what it is that we need to discuss and where we're getting our information and so on and so forth.
Yeah, Shannon?
I'd like to propose an approach to tackling this conversation tonight if we are settling. I, given the comments this evening, I think it would be helpful because as you were speaking, Sarah, one of the things that resonated with me and I wrote down is buffers could address the issues that you have without an overlay district. I think the question and what we're tasked with tonight is, will they? Because if the concern that you name is that the colocation or proximity to a dense neighborhood or a dense neighborhood that doesn't have mixed uses, for example, to the things you named, could be addressed in the buffers, which you've given us some points to consider in our memo. And so that feels like a really appropriate starting point. I would like to clarify on process. Does the Planning Board have an option in saying, no, City Council, we believe we should stick with an overlay? Because I feel as though we're being directed to give guidance on changes that have been requested. And so just in terms of role clarity, because the real opportunity for us to address some of the concerns that we've heard tonight, some of the concerns we've shared on our own before, is to dig into what is the buffer, what's the distance, what's the purpose of the distance so that we can use our procedural tools to address those concerns in our own. And so I guess that's a process point. And if so, I would say that we start with talking about some of the recommended buffers and purposes and then get to the conditional uses that you named. I don't think taking them in order of articles is helpful, as you noted. So can you offer the process point in terms of our engagement with council, the requests that we're being asked and what initiated this discussion? Just that context would be helpful.
Oh, I'll jump in first and just say that the process, which you're pretty familiar with, but I'll just outline it, would be that either you or the council would initiate a change to the zoning and land use code. And then it would come to you for a public hearing and a recommendation. So tonight is an opportunity for you to discuss this, decide if you want to initiate changes and be the board that initiates changes. And you've been working with the council, so I'll let John speak to the rest.
And to answer your question, you can do what you would like to do. If you do not want to make the changes, that's your prerogative. As Shelley said, tonight is about making the initiation. When we had our joint session with the council and the board, it was brought up amongst many of the overlay district, of the overlay zone, and wanted to make some changes to it. A lot of it also stems from the council changing their business ordinance. And so a lot of what they did in the business ordinance could have an effect. It could necessitate some sort of change in the zoning. And so now it's kicked back. Now it's your prerogative and your initiation, if you so choose, to make these changes. These are just some recommendations. These are, think of these as talking points. None of these have come directly from the City Council. The staff has basically been taking excerpts of the City Council meetings as well as going all the way back to the joint meeting that we had and just started putting some thoughts onto paper so that you guys could have a further discussion and see if you can come to, you know, some sort of congruence with kind of how the council is going and moving. But if not, that is your prerogative.
I am grateful for the organization of the way in which you named the discussion points and suggested some criteria based on prior conversations. I think it's much better than a big brainstorm session, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Right, so basically, we could just kick it back. I mean, after we have a discussion, we could kick it back to the City Council and say, we don't want to initiate it, we'll make you initiate it. Yes?
Yes.
Absolutely, you could do that, yes.
They're touchy tonight. They do feel extra touchy tonight.
Yeah, they are, so...
I'll note, I think the only thing that I've noted in here that really is necessary is that based on the changes that they're making with business licensing, we need to eliminate our definition of homeless shelters in the zoning and land use code because they would like it to live in the business licensing instead of here and have just one definition.
Right.
So that's the only, like, hard and fast thing that I think has come out of what their business licensing changes are that they've made that we will need to address.
So we could recommend just that one item to be, to come up and let them... I'm just, you know, being...
Absolutely, that's certainly...
That's an option. If, after our discussion, people decide that that's what they want, okay. Let's give Roger a chance to speak.
Shelley, has this all come about because of this thing with Schmengies becoming a homeless shelter?
I wouldn't say that's the driving force behind it. I believe, in listening to the council meetings, from the very get-go, they have been very interested in this particular topic. And they have made no bones about it that this is one of the major issues that they wanted to tackle was the shelter overlay zone. And as part of, you know, the joint meeting we had, the discussion of taking the licensing piece and revamping that to house the majority of the homeless shelter language. And so Schmengies, I would not say that that is the driving factor for all of this, no.
Well, in my opinion, you know, with Schmengies being out on River Road where it is, it's an ideal place for it. And I think changing the overlay to encompass everything in the city, basically. You know, I have to agree with Mr. McCarthy that, you know, I've been on the board for five years now and this has been kicked down the road many, many times. And we keep coming up with the same solution. The thing is, if they want Schmengies as a homeless shelter, albeit, you know, like I say, we can vote it in and make an exception for them only. But I don't see the reason why we should change the overlay that is currently in place. Now, you know, what it's all about is that it's ideal for the downtown location, which provides the services that these people need, and that's where it should stay. I know I've got people and friends of mine that live out in the Ramada Inn area that, going by what Mr. McCarthy was saying, their houses have been broken into, there's defecated on their lawns, things have been stolen off their porches, people have been sleeping in their backyards, you know, and there's needles everywhere, you know. So the thing is, is that with homeless shelters, yes, you have to have supervision, but you can only supervise so much. So by expanding or eliminating overlays, you're just eliminating the fact that these people will do whatever they want to do, when they want to do it, and there's no control over it.
Okay. Michael?
Thank you for those comments.
Very good comments.
I agree with everything that Mr. Dupree said. And my formulating those thoughts are a little more difficult, especially tonight. Going back again to the reading of the agenda and the packet on Friday. Reading the motion about initiate, kind of found it a little confusing. And I understood perfectly what Shelley said earlier about it can be initiated here, it can be initiated from the council, and I would have suspected that it would have been initiated from the council as opposed to here. So I'm a little baffled as to why the configuration looks as it does tonight. We did have that joint meeting and I was trying to remember over the weekend where I heard certain thoughts, and it must have been that evening. Can't think of any other venue. There was discussion not to open it up to areas of commerce. I don't know that we spoke about any zoning districts, but highway business might be one, you know, when you talk about commercial. Maybe we're talking about Mill and Riverfront.
That language was provided, if that's helpful.
It might be. And I would prefer to have that discussion first because I don't have any problem with the current overlay. And also, I heard this evening something with respect to the business license. And my interpretation is we change the language to a certain definition and we end up making it a matter of right just about anywhere in the community except for any zones that we may say that it can and cannot be. And I'm not in favor of any neighborhood, whether it's NCA, NCB, NB, or any of the other classifications. Right down there on the corner of East Avenue and Pleasant, the feed all the way back to the Ramada, and it's getting ugly down there. I suspect that I shared a few meetings ago when we talked about needles, and thank you for reminding me of that. I have an extended family member that's going through a lengthy process in healthcare because he was stuck with a needle while emptying trash for a local business on Sabata Street. I thought it was Lisbon Street that night. And I'm glad I didn't name the business because it wasn't the one I was thinking of. But buffers, the first thing I heard tonight was buffers. And it's like, okay, we're moving right into removing an overlay for the entire city and now we're talking about buffers. Whether I vote against this motion, which I was prepared to do tonight, or in some altered state where we consider which zones, yes and no. And another thought, just trying to put them all together, it's a little difficult. And thank you again for mentioning Schmengies. That was on my mind and I came up with, you know, the phrase, spot zoning. If we want to do spot zoning, because this is going to be at Schmengies and that's the whole operation, and maybe there's even a push because Schmengies could be operational before winter and that's a concern because it's turning cold, then, okay, let's do this as a means to open up Schmengies. But I don't want, as we have seen in the past, wholesale changing of zoning on certain parcels or thoroughfares in Lewiston. We've had some rather contentious discussions and votes along Sabata Street and Lisbon Street in the last couple of years with regards to that. Because once you open up something to a matter of right and it's out of the Planning Board's hands, anything can happen. It can go anywhere. The neighbors aren't going to have an opportunity to come to the Planning Board and comment on having something that's going to impact negatively their neighborhood where they've lived their entire lives, pay plenty of taxes, want to stay in this community. But every time we turn around, something is pushing them out of the community, to retire away. There are business people right now looking to leave this community for various reasons. Topics for a different time. So that's where I'm at as far as the progression of tonight's meeting. And as far as the overlay district for No Name Pond, which I suspect is a different topic than the homeless shelter, I'm not even familiar with what's going on there.
Okay. Alex, you wanted to make, welcome back.
Sure. Just for the record, so we reflect it, when we're talking about Schmengies, it's 551 Lincoln Street in Lewiston. Just making sure that we don't end up with notes, you know, 10 years in the future and people are like, what Schmengies? I think that would be unlikely, but still, still. Good hygiene here.
Yep.
I wanted to sort of bring back what I was recalling about our discussion when we had the joint session with the City Council around the homeless shelter overlay district. And, you know, my desire, and I think the desire of some other folks, both on the council and on this board, to move a lot of the regulatory sort of licensing language out of the land use section of code and into the business section. So, you know, regardless of where we land in terms of, you know, acceptable places to build these facilities, I think it is worthwhile looking at initiating a discussion around cleaning up the language in the code so that, you know, things that have to do with licensing are in the licensing section, things that have to do with operations are in the licensing section, and things that have to do with the built quality of the structure, amenities provided, and where those structures are located stays in zoning. And I just wanted to make sure that we bring that up and we name that for this discussion, that there's sort of two issues here and I want to make sure that we don't put them all together. Because I think, you know, we could keep things exactly the same as they are now and just do some cleaning up of the language, and that would be of an immense benefit.
And still require a change to be initiated.
And still require change to be initiated. Thank you for that, Shannon, yeah.
Gemma?
Madam Chair, if I may, the staff went back and looked at, you know, again, trying to review the joint meeting we had, reviewing all of the content. And it was clear that something needed to be done, that one of the bodies needed to do something. We presumed that by this body initiating it would be in their own driver's seat and being able to make those changes that they so choose and move forward that way rather than asking the council to initiate it. And so that's from a staff point how we were looking at this.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Shanna? I couldn't agree more. I think even if we took a vote tonight to not initiate, that the council will initiate. That was very clear, it's been clear, and I think that, uh, it'll just come back to us with whatever has been initiated. I think the opportunity right now is to initiate with our concerns noted and direction offered to staff. And I think that, um, is a rare advantage to this board, and I think we should take it, is my opinion. I do think that the conversation that we had, um, what feels like a lifetime ago, and for some of us feels like multiple times over a long period of time, because we were here for the first round of this, is, is the reality is, uh, the licensing, so the ability for the city to give a business or nonprofit the licensure to operate does not guarantee them the place to operate from. And that the licensing should be governed by a licensing body and not us, I don't want any part of that. And that the initial definitions put that onus into the planning space and not the licensing space. And so I am just straw poll wise, very much in favor of making a motion to change that language and put the licensing. I don't want us to ever be reviewing the notification plan and the bed arrangements and the safety use policies, and that is part of the licensing and should be in someone else's department. And, and the way that our current language is written puts that on us. And so, so no matter what, I'm for start initiating a motion.
Perhaps what we can do is, is initiate, uh, do two motions. Do one that would be...
So I was going to recommend, so I was going to recommend two, actually, two things. I think it's really important that we carve out, uh, homeless shelters from the No Name Pond overlay district. I don't think we should mingle them.
Nope.
I think that we should, and if it is a point of contention, I'd like to begin by making a motion to initiate code amendments for homeless shelters and the homeless shelter overlay district pursuant to Article 7, Section 4, Article 17, Amendment, Section 5, so that we may vote on that, resolve that issue, and then give direction for that vote prior to opening up the discussion of the No Name Pond. And so a motion has been made.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. Further discussion? Alex?
From a procedural standpoint, I know one of us asked this question during the joint session, I forget the answer. There's an entity that wants to build a homeless shelter. The first thing that they have to do is get code approval to build the structure or renovate the structure. Once they've done that, then they apply for their business license and then they get that permission, right? And then they're allowed to operate. Is that how it, it would work?
In the current code, uh, I believe that's how it's operating in the current code, if I'm not mistaken. Shelley could correct me if I'm wrong.
I don't know, is they have to get their building permit first, but they do have to get inspections from fire and code before they get their license, and they need to get their conditional use permit. So, um, you had seen as a board a shelter on Park Street, um, that had come before you for their conditional use permit before they were going to get their license.
Got it, got it. And so something I think we should probably keep in mind if we go in this direction with the discussion is that order of operations, if, you know, thinking about this from the other side of like, okay, well, we do want homeless shelters someplace, this is a, this is a need that needs to be addressed. That creates a lot of uncertainty for the person doing that development to be like, well, I could pull the permits, get the structure, get it inspected, and then go for my license and have it turned down. Once I've made all of this investment, I'm just not going to do it at all. And so just thinking about, yeah, what, what's a tool or a mechanism that we could put in place there that would maybe give them some assurances? Um, but again, like Shanna said and like I said earlier, you know, make sure that we're not putting licensing regulations into planning and code language.
So the nature of this discussion makes me think we do want to discuss it tonight, which is what the motion is for. If there is, and I've heard two votes of reticence already, perhaps maybe our conversation has evolved our thinking. But if there is going to be resistance to discuss this topic tonight until the council has initiated it, I'd like to identify that early. And if there isn't, then we can give the direction that we are able to give for council to consider this in the process. And so that is why I've made my motion so early, so that we can have a vested discussion and know that it is going somewhere, and if not, move on.
Right. I personally, I mean, I was being devil's advocate discussing, you know, giving it back to the council. I think we should initiate it where we can control, uh, the direction that we think we want it to go. We should initiate, for sure, the change in the language, removing it from code, our, uh, planning code to the licensing, that, that's a no-brainer, in my, in my opinion. And then discuss the rest of it.
Are all of those discussions discussions we would make once we agreed to initiate?
Yes, well, that, right, so we do need to agree to initiate. So, Michael?
Seconded the motion for second discussion and a chance to take a look at the motion. Removing No Name from the joint motion initially. And, uh, I'm hearing, starting, or initiating the conversation here does have value. At least, uh, we're putting the first word forward, uh, as opposed to allowing council to put the first word forward and then reacting.
Right.
Uh, it does necessitate, uh, a hearing at a future date.
Oh, absolutely.
This may push things into the next calendar year, uh, at some point, uh, we're close to the, uh, the end of this calendar year. I took a look at the homeless shelter language, uh, I took a look at the zoning language, uh, and for the first time since the agenda was put out on Thursday, I think I understand some of where the direction could end up. I, I, I will support the motion, uh, that's on the floor, but I have serious concerns about things that I'm reading in the details. The devil is always in the details. Uh, so I'll, I'll reserve until that point in time to raise those concerns and may have a different, uh, vote than just being happy-go-lucky tonight.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Uh, do we still want to have more discussion, or do we just want to vote on the motion to initiate and then we can discuss?
I, I like the idea of let's, let's call the vote and then we can continue to discuss.
Okay. All right. In that case, I will call the vote. Roger Dupree?
Epstein.
Michael Marcot?
Yes.
Shanna Cox?
Yes.
Alex Pine?
Yes.
Penthea Burns?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson, yes. Okay, so we have an affirmative to initiate.
May we enter into discussion about this and not No Name Pond and keep these a little bit separate?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, because I don't think that they're anything to do with each other. So I think we definitely need to keep them separate.
I'd like to propose a first discussion point.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Shanna.
I'd like to propose that we highly encourage the council to ensure that, uh, along with the changes being initiated, including the definitions, um, that any location is a conditional use. And that there is no place in the bulk land use table where permitted by right will be allowed relative to this use. And I think that will allow this planning board and future planning boards to know that some of what the details are that will get ironed out will be able to be thoughtfully reviewed through this mechanism. And I'm curious if we have some consensus or agreement on that to give that recommendation as a starting point. I think so much waterfalls from it.
Sure. So let me, Roger, how do you feel about what she said? So that everything is a conditional use, nothing is a, an actual...
I agree with that.
Michael?
Uh, just want to add something more than just simple answer, uh, and see if I understand correctly. I'm not sure which page I'm on, but, uh, there was a number five limiting night bed shelter in rural suburban residential zoning districts, i.e. rural agricultural, low-density residential, I forget SR, uh, MDR, uh, that's medium something residential, and NCA, which really caught my attention. That, that's like the upper scale neighborhoods in Lewiston, NCA. I'd had some serious, uh, concern with that, and just to get, uh, clarification. So going conditional basically eliminates that whole, uh, number five?
Well, it doesn't eliminate it, but I, what I think, it, it just makes it more difficult, you know, where we as the planning board can, can have a role and can put in, uh, conditions.
What, like we, like we did on the property, uh, uh, on the corner of Firewell and Sabata's.
Yeah, so it's two separate things. So we could agree that we want all of it, any location to be a conditional use, which means it would always need to come in front of us. And we could say it is not permitted nor a conditional use in NCA, or, and so we have both mechanisms available to us.
Right, so we can, so we can, we can add those conditions when we have the formal discussion.
Okay, so in the simplest terms, on the question that's before us?
Right.
Uh, I'd say yes.
Okay, Shanna?
Yeah.
Alex?
Makes sense to me.
Penthea?
Makes sense to me as well.
Okay, me too. So that's...
Clear consensus point of direction to provide counsel.
Okay. Next?
Yeah, I, I would, I don't mean to start each one and I certainly don't have to be, but I, I do think that it's useful. Um, I think in the points that Mr. Marcot's talking about is really the buffer zones and uses, but not the broader use requirements around outdoor areas, I think that would be the secondary point. And so as we look at these, um, I want to reflect that I understand that you are not recommending anything, you're pulling a point, uh, forward discussions that have been held previously. I feel like any buffer based on this use that we recommend should be consistent. And so the notes and conversations that have happened previously, and as is in the record, 250 feet from a school or daycare, 200 feet from a residence, 500 feet from a city park or trail. If we just start to look at like buffer by feet, I would love to see them be consistent and be 500 or 750 feet. When we get to the point where you've proposed a number and we're having this discussion in detail, I would very much like a conditional use bulk and use chart and a map of all of the zoning in our community, like the overlay, and a big one, because we've had this discussion before and they tend to be small. So when we have that discussion about where these buffers really start to do, I think it'd be very helpful to have some visual aids. Um, but I think that they should be consistent. If we're naming the sensitivity of use and its co-location next to, um, you could add business to this list and that maybe starts to address some of, some of the items in number four. But for all of them, I think that number should be consistent. If it's 500 feet from a trail, it's 500 feet from a school, it's 500 feet from a nearing business. And I just, I think that level of consistency will make it easier to apply and spot check the rule. I think it'll make it easier for potential developed owners, operators. Um, and I think if we're saying it's sensitive and there's a distance required, like it should just be the same one.
We couldn't agree more, and, and we would like, and, and that's part of this process, right? We, we're, we're looking for some context from you, uh, these numbers are just arbitrary.
Yeah, yeah.
And so we would like to be able, in our memo and in our writings, to bring back to you for the public hearing, some context behind these numbers.
Yeah.
These are numbers that you want us to work with, we would, to bring to the council. So that's kind of the discussion that we'd like to have with you is, you, you tell us, what, what do you feel is a, is a good number for a buffer? From what establishments that buffer number should be and the reasoning behind it so that we can, uh, so we can, you know, put that into a, a coherent, uh, document.
Yeah, okay, good. Penthea, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I mean, it's sort, this is sort of, I think maybe the opposite of a buffer, but one of the comments Roger made earlier about, um, the logic of having a shelter near, um, access to services. How, does that get addressed in this process at all as a, a criteria that makes sense, so?
So proximity to instead of distance from?
Yeah.
Yeah, as a way of...
Absolutely. So let's, let's put that in the discussion.
Yeah.
Proximity to instead of distance of services, you know, I mean, if they're way out in the boonies and the services are all downtown, then, uh, you know, how are we going to get them there? Or how are they going to get there?
Yeah, I will say that.
Absolutely.
Research has shown that, uh, well-run shelter will provide shuttles and access to transportation. And so that, and I offer that because it creates potentially more opportunity. Currently, a large portion of our homeless community is walking three-quarters of a mile over pedestrian pathways and railways to access services regularly, and they're doing so fairly successfully. For what that's worth, and so in terms of distance or closeness and proximity to services, I think it would be helpful to see what experts who provide services. And so I, I would encourage you to think of a, a number or a distance or a method. So maybe it's on the public transportation line, or licensing requires a shuttle or transportation solutions as proof, like there's a couple of ways to get there. I think it's in a point that we've focused on before, and I think there are people who work with this population successfully, get people into more stable housing and know what it takes. And I think that would be valuable information for you to bring forward.
I agree absolutely.
Thank you. I agree. I agree. Roger had, had a comment, and I'll get to it.
Just to parallel that, I think, you know, when you're looking at the downtown area, are we going to say that the buffer should be the same as the outlying areas? In other words, you know, going back to what Panetta said, and I said earlier, that the services downtown are a more congested area. So the buffer should be in a smaller, you know, increment versus something that's outlying where, you know, now you've got residential families and, you know, facilities out there that would probably be, you know, impacted by having a homeless shelter in that area. You'd say, going back to the 750 or...
Right, but I think perhaps what we can do is if they bring up, let's say, 500 feet at, at the, the, uh, public hearing, then we can bring it up and discuss, uh, changing that for certain areas, once we have the maps.
Yeah.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah, sure, sure.
I want to make sure I understand your question, because I think it's a really important one. Um, in the downtown, 500 feet could encapsulate 15 businesses and 30 residences. And 500 feet in other parts of our community is like next door.
Mm-hmm, right.
Right, and so some of this is about density, parcel size. And the reason I mention all that is because we might have a framework that could offer some solutions, which is in our design district overlay, we many times recognize that there's variance within the space and that the way in which that parcel's considerations will be made is an average of the parcels on either side. And so there, there might be some precedent by us already in terms of recognizing the context of the place in which the shelter is being proposed, relative to density, proximity, closeness. And so if, if that's the piece that you're speaking about, and it's not about a hard number, but more about neighborhood context, then we did some stuff with that in the
Design.
Design district, and we might have a, a framework for a solution already there.
Right.
For guidance.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
If that's what you meant.
Alex, did you want to say something?
Yeah, to just jump in on, uh, Penthea's co-tails here, um, you know, another area that I think it would be interesting to look at, and, and this is kind of tough because we're starting to get into the licensing side of things, and, you know, where do we want to draw this line? You know, I see, you know, a, a buffer for schools, but I would imagine for either a youth shelter or a family shelter, being closer to a school is actually preferable. And of course, I'd love to hear from people who are actually doing the work, you know, I, I'm an ignorant person compared to them. But certainly, I think, you know, having, having things like accessibility to a sidewalk even, you know, pedestrian infrastructure, transit, I think these are, are things that
I think, I think...
would be universally good.
Right, I think one of the, in, in the, the, uh, city council stuff that they, that you gave us, I think there was some references to if it's a family shelter, then the, then the school buffers don't, don't count. So I think that's, I'm not sure if that's licensing or if it would be in, in, uh, planning code, but I think that that is definitely a consideration, whether it be teenagers or a family shelter, that the, uh, school and daycare type of, of buffers need not apply. Or, you know, so we need to be careful not to, uh, be so hard and fast that if somebody wants to put a family shelter near, relatively near a school or a daycare, where these people could put their kids and then go get a job, or, you know, I think that we have to, um, I think that's a good part of the discussion. Shanna?
So, without getting ahead of ourselves, but it's challenging because this whole thing's chicken and egg. In the definition of homeless shelter, which is like a draft definition being updated on page, I don't know, but in there, one of the... But in there, one of the things that's come up in our prior conversations before the original overlay, as we considered different proposed concrete projects before and after the previous overlay, the reality is that it all comes down to definition. And right now, in a community that has no approved homeless shelter, we have dozens of homeless shelters because there are so many different types of small and specific use temporary by this definition, temporary overnight accommodations to homeless persons who are guest-free monetary charge, period. So in that context, a four-person home in a two-bedroom house, single-family home might already be in somebody's neighborhood right now, offering recovery services or domestic violence services. And I know that we've gone round and round around how we parse out some of those specific use and some of those targeted populations because the very real concerns that have been named both by the audience and planning board members tonight are really good examples of what happens in a dense, large number shelter. And that that is very different than a town home being used by two homeless families on either side, both of which are actively getting kids and have a six-month cap and support system to get them into permanent housing. And they're only going to be there for six months, so it's by definition temporary, in which it gives, it's this. Right? And, and we don't currently, our existing beds in this community separate men and women, don't keep families together and aren't environments that I would want to bring my family to. And part of that is the restrictions that we've put on the lack of places for family-style homeless shelters. And so I just want to, I, some of this is going to come down to the definition and the way in which the definition clarifies that it is either including, excluding, or making some types of differences for families or smaller. And I think that's what you were trying to get to on number five, the limiting to an eight-bed shelter, right? And like eight bed could be, what, seven kids, mom and dad, mom and mom, dad and dad, whatever. But two parents in one bed and then a bunch of kids.
Right.
Not all that different from my home sometimes, it feels like. And so, so like, I think that piece matters and have, how we carve it out. It's almost like the definition needs to address.
Well, it's got several definitions.
Yeah, like a bulk or congregate facility versus small, more intensive care facilities. Because frankly, I do think that, you know, we'll talk about it later, devils in the details, but a 500-foot buffer from all of these things, anywhere within the municipal boundaries for eight people? Yep, it's probably the place that I've lived next to transitional homes and you, I didn't know it for eight months, right? And so like it doesn't come with all those, there's not defecation on the lawn, there's no needles and, right? And so if the concern is about the nuisance or risk to neighbors, let's address that and be clear about where that comes from. And then let's identify. And so for me, some of it is about the definition, some of it's about the use. Like if we're going to warehouse people who are homeless with 60 or 80 or 100 people, yeah, there's a handful of locations, the buffer doesn't cover it and let's be really explicit. But if we're looking at thoughtful ways to house our unhoused community that addresses families or domestic violence or a recovery program with lots of services, and we're only putting eight people together, I'm going to be more comfortable with that with the conditional uses and licensing in place. And so I, I think one of my recommendations for discussion for the council would be to parse out the different, and I think it's about size, because I think size is where you get some of the behaviors and use that's being named. And so like, how do we differentiate this side? Like there is a small shelter and then a mid-size or just small and big. But how do we define that? Because the rules and locations, I think, would be fundamentally different. And we're closing off really great opportunities if we're just saying no, because I don't want 100 people homeless shelter like we had at the Armory at the Ramada on Grove Street.
Just really quick, and, and when we say, you know, small, medium, and large shelters, I think, you know, talking about family units versus single individuals, those are very different definitions, you know?
Yeah.
10, 10 people that are single individuals is a much bigger number than two large families.
Right.
And, and it seems to me like maybe the inflection point that we're really thinking about with this, you know, there's other edge cases here, but really the presence of minors, I think, is really what we've, we've really started to talk about the most. You know, I know you brought up domestic violence, that sometimes that doesn't involve minors and I think that's an edge case. But I think one thing that we could maybe grapple on to right now is presence of minors and that affecting how, how we look at this.
Penthea?
Yeah, I think similar to what you were saying earlier, Shannon, that, that the body of people who are doing this work out there, there's probably lots of.
We've got definitions for this somewhere.
In defining these different kinds of services being offered and.
Yeah.
And I think we need to consult these people to, to get these, that information that we're all looking, we're all talking about and we're all looking, but we need to, to, you know, you guys are, need to, to talk to these people or find out what, you know, how the definitions, the way that, that we can do it so that it works with the actual services that are out there, not just what we dream of in our minds that we have no idea what we're talking about, especially I have no idea what. You know, I mean, I mean, I don't know, I don't know this, this, this type of, these people because I don't have exposure to them. So I have no frames, frame of reference. Whereas if we start talking to the people who do this work, then we can put together a, a much better program or, or code that will be practical for day, everyday kind of work that they're doing. Yes, Michael?
Going, going back to the buffers and the conversation migrated towards something else that has taken some pre-notes for definitions. Definitions make a big difference, especially if definitions of types of facilities catering to different types of the homeless might be able to expand to different zones. Because like Shannon said, you're not going to have the same impact in a neighborhood if it's a family shelter.
Right.
But you will have an impact if it's one definition for all. And it's the homeless that are drug addicted or have antisocial behaviors. So, so that's a concern.
Absolutely.
Coming back to buffers, just so that, clear my head, I said what I wanted to say earlier. Buffers have a context and a purpose. Now, when we talk about buffers, you know, when we go through development review and such, we're usually doing it for line of sight. Now, we're doing it to buffer the noise from a commercial use to a, that's a budding residential use. But I'm not sure that buffers could be looked at as the same in all different zones.
Right.
Or even within the same zone, depending on the type of shelter it is.
Right.
That would necessarily be a one-size-fits-all.
Right, the same type of buffer that we would require for a Shemengi, Shemengi's, what they're planning to do there. If it was, you know, where it is now has allow, you know, can have certain buffers. But you stick that same shelter in, on Grove Street, in my neighborhood, it's going to have to have a different type of buffer than it does on River Road. So those are kinds of considerations that we definitely need to, to, to consider. And, and I think it, it comes down to if we have like the small family shelter or if it's 10 individuals that are not related, that, that's going to require something else. Or if it's, you know, 50 people. So, you know, we really need to be, the definitions need to be cleared or clearer and, and buffers may need to be adjusted for the different definitions of the types of shelters that we're talking about. Alex?
Yeah, and I think, you know, Michael brought up a good point of, you know, what we're requiring a buffer for is so often something that is stationary at the site. You know, I think back to our, our decision with bourgeois guitars, you know, noise from the sawmill, you know, sound, things like that. And I think what makes this use different is that often sort of the complaints in the neighborhood where the facilities have been located, it's not, it's not the facility, it's sort of people being drawn through the neighborhood to the facility. It's the traffic. And I wonder how we've looked at this for, you know, seeing like a truck depot or something like that where, you know, there's vehicular impact, sort of a similar idea of the impact is mobile compared to the actual use. And I, maybe we don't have really anything there. But I think one way we can address that is proximity through, you know, places where some of the antisocial behavior that Michael was talking about could manifest in a really bad way, like a park or, or something like that. But, you know, at the same time, yeah, we can't, we don't want to get so overly prescriptive with what type of things we want next to other things that it, again, makes it so onerous for folks to, to do this work that they just don't even really look in the first place. But I think another thing that I wanted to point out is if we can get the language that this field uses to describe different sizes of facilities and different types of facilities and we incorporate that into our.
And different service groups.
In different service groups, yes, yes. And we can use that language in our organs. That makes it much easier for them to approach their work here because what they're saying and what we're saying does not need to be translated. And they can say, I want to open XYZ, it says I can do XYZ through this process. And we're not making up some new term that doesn't exist anywhere else.
Absolutely. I think that is, that, that is very much what we, I think what we've been discussing. Yes, Shannon?
I think that we've covered items one through six in your buffer zone. And I'm wondering if anyone else would like to start by talking about outdoor spaces and going through those items in order as listed. May I?
Madam Chair, if I may, very quickly.
Sure.
In, in speaking with a majority of the councillors prior to this meeting, I wanted to find some congruence with them and with you. I, I think the sentiment amongst the majority of them is that they would, they would like to have a prohibition of shelters in the downtown business district. Is, is that something, I'm just looking for some easy, easy punch list items that we can put on for the next public hearing. Is that something that you would like to discuss? Is that kind of an agreement of the board that that's one of the areas that, that you would like to see a, a prohibition or just a conditional use? Can we discuss that just a little bit further if we haven't already?
Yeah, Roger, well, I'll, I'll go down the li, the line.
No, I think the conditional use covers what we're looking at here. You know, as far as the downtown area, I think that's where the consensus is that majority of the homeless shelters should provide the services that they need because it's walking distance and everybody sorts the congregates downtown. Conditional use there would encompass everything that we're looking at.
Okay, Michael?
I sort of remember that discussion and it seemed to be consensus that night to avoid commercial. But at the same time, there wasn't a whole lot of discussion as to what constituted, I mean, like, like commercial. People might think about a corridor. Along that corridor may not be the same zone every 100 feet. So do you take each different parcel? But hearing the statement Roger eloquently presented, conditional basically alleviates that. So I don't think that there needs to be a prohibition if there's a conditional application.
Okay.
Shannon?
I think that we should be thoughtful and suggest some areas that they're prohibited. I don't know that it makes sense to do that by district. I think it is about corridors. I think when we get to the outdoor spaces and some of the other things, I think it's about two things that I've heard from constituents in our community and which I think is probably why city council, it's also resonating with them. I think taking our best tax properties and putting them into what is almost always a nonprofit structure is an ongoing concern in this community about the impact on the tax base. And so I think, and I think that we also have precedent of our good work done here in conjunction with city council. I think we could be talking about corridors and that 500 feet from those corridors and back from those corridors are prohibited. And it doesn't take out whole districts, but it names areas that we've already focused on improving economic development and commercial use. And I, I think that level of clarity in advance codified actually helps developers or service providers as they think and helps us guide them into where we do want it instead of wasting time and process and real estate agents' time and looking at things that we're never going to approve. So I say put out what we're not going to approve and prohibit it. Don't do it by district. I think some of that can get, so the, I'd love to see, you know, whatever the footage is, I'd love to see that from a commercial use. And I think we can talk about businesses and prohibiting its proximity to business through the buffer language as well. I think conditional use is a place we spot check it, but I'd love for people who are trying to propose this needed service for our community to have some direction on where we will and will not be supportive. And we already know where we're not going to be supportive. I also would love council to reconcile how we say in our densest, most commercial districts, we don't want it. And we also want it not in residential neighborhoods and close in proximity to services. And when you map where services are provided and where the commercial district is, it's going to be the same map. So if we want to get clear about what we don't want, then we need to be clear about what we don't want and put it out there for everybody to understand. And we want to incentivize that which we do want. And I don't think this is a topic that can handle broad brushstrokes.
Alex?
Yeah, I was gonna, I, I don't know this for a fact, but isn't there a shelter of some sort already in our downtown district that's been operating just fine? Or maybe I'm misinformed.
Six, maybe more.
So I think, I think, yeah.
Depending on definition.
Depending on definition, yeah. And so I think we're, you know, we're, we're circling back on this. Definitions really matter. And I agree with Shannon, like, let's, let's look at this from a, you know, where is the land that we don't want this on? But not calling it an arbitrary district where, you know, right side of the street, it's okay, and the left side of the street, it's not okay. I don't think that's really a good approach to this.
Okay.
Penthea?
I just, I don't think I have anything to add to that comment. So the other board members, I appreciate their comments.
Yeah, I agree. I, I don't think we, we should do the broad strokes of downtown business district. Or, you know, I think we, we need to, to be much more thoughtful and using the, the buffers and those areas to, to do that instead of saying, no, you, you can't do it here. And then realize that all of the, yeah, you know, I mean, you can't do it here, but you can't, and you can't do it there. So, and, and so there's nothing left to do it.
Yeah, but it gets back to the same thing is that whether it is conditional use or prohibition. And I think.
Yeah, I think the conditional use is a good way to do it.
More of, of the areas that we're looking at.
Yeah.
And gives us the authority or.
Flexibility.
The flexibility to, you know, decide whether or not that particular establishment is going to be able to work in that area.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I think, you know, instead of beating around the bush, let's just say conditional use is where we want to go.
Right, Michael?
When I mentioned corridors, I'm not sure that I was saying prohibited or allow. My thought process was, we went down Lisbon Street from, let's say, Adams to Main. You may run into different zones each step of the way. So trying to do it by zone would not be workable.
It's not a practical way of doing it.
Not a practical way of doing it. And by suggesting prohibition in a corridor, I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to. I'm just wondering, how do you create a definition and how do you create a mapping of such a zone?
Right, and I think that's, that's where Roger in the conditional use will, will help us to, to do that. In, along the corridors.
Well, that's what I initially understood was that conditional would take care of it.
Right.
But if conditional doesn't necessarily, and conditional may still mean that even though we can put conditions on things, we can't necessarily deny, and there seems to be a sentence, a sentiment, to deny in certain corridors. Which. A little bit of a tug-of-war, a little bit of, yeah, I like it and don't like it on one side of the argument and the same on the other side of the argument. So whether it's all done through conditional or if there. So whether it's all done through conditional or if there are certain corridors that can be defined where they wouldn't even be considered for conditional, I could probably accept that, too.
Alex?
Yeah, I, I wanted to just go back to what Roger said, you know, where you're, Roger, you're really looking at this as, let's just make everything conditional instead of having carve out spots. I think what Shanna is saying is really valuable to say, like, we know there are spots that we will not provide conditional use and we don't want to play guess and check. You know, it's like me asking you, like, "Hey Roger, tell me what my favorite food is." Go for it. And like, you're just going to have to keep guessing, keep guessing, keep guessing. And if, if those guesses end up being public hearings in front of this board-
We've done that.
One, people aren't going to want to do it.
And then they're done that.
And then also, like, you know, the, the net effect of that is, we will end up with, here's a little bubble of denied applications, you know? This is a de facto zone that we don't, we don't want to have these in. So I think it is good, I think we want to be judicious about where we pick out.
Yeah.
I think using the buffer framework in my mind makes the most sense. So whether the landmark is a street and a corridor, and we buffer off of that, because I can imagine there's some parcels where, you know, there's going to be multiple uses on site perhaps, and maybe the shelter use is outside the buffer from the corridor because it's a sufficiently large parcel.
There's a parcel on Charles Street that fits that, Charles Street. Fits those, and like, those are the real, I mean, we did or didn't put that into a commercial zone and we've had those conversations.
Yep.
And that was also about density.
So not having, I think, making sure that we look at it from a buffer standpoint, a feat from a landmark standpoint.
Yeah.
Not, you know, whether or not it has frontage-
Right.
Or anything like that. That seems like the, the, the most useful thing to me. To get that point, I think, yeah, we need a big map printed out and some markers.
Okay. Have we given you guys enough direction to?
So sorry. So that last comment, we need to look at a map with markers. So what are you looking at for possible buffers?
I'm happy to offer some up there from historical. Yeah. Yeah, so your, so we have changed the boundaries of districts in my service on the board a couple of times, which is why they feel super arbitrary. Not once have we said Sabata Street is no longer a commercial corridor or that Sabata Street is not Sabata Street, for example. So I would tell you that this board has done significant work on encouraging commercial development and economic development on the Lisbon Street corridor, the Main Street corridor, the Sabata Street corridor, and if you want to include it in discussion, though for this purpose, I wouldn't choose to, we also discussed the East Ave corridor. So those are three primary examples of which you could say anything with 500 feet proximity to these three streets from this to this, and we did that work. You could reference this body's work, you don't have to make that up. We, we did that with council and got it approved. And so there is precedent to say, here are main commercial corridors, we in joint discussions with city council prioritized development on these corridors, we named where the corridor started, we named where it ended, we made actions to do that, use that good work and say, and within 500 feet on either side of these corridors, we will not consider or approve a conditional use for any large shelter or this type of shelter. And I think that that good work has been done by this board and in alignment with council, which is why I think they're saying, no, let's not do it in the commercial districts. I would say, commercial districts is actually commercial corridors and we've used that language and you have geography-
Mm-hmm.
-that can nail that down. And that's where I would start.
So, so when we get a map, I think it would be good to have something, you know, because we're probably going to do it on a computer to some degree, making the corridors that we've identified already on that map. I think we also, didn't we review some sort of like state development? It was in our last, it was, it was when we worked on the ADU code, wasn't there-
Two thousand and three?
There was, there was a map of like development sites that we had to update.
We have a growth area up-
Growth area, there we go.
Right. That language was troublesome. Did we revise that language in that conversation and reach some agreement on-
We did have to redefine growth from the, the planning-
From the comprehensive plan.
Sorry, from the comprehensive plan, because there was not, it, it didn't sink.
To be clear, I'm, I'm looking for these things so that we can have them as discussion, not necessarily that we want to address them as like, oh, this is going to be the language we're going to use.
It would be a layer you'd want to see in that discussion.
Put a couple extra layers down and say like, hmm, okay, trend here, you know?
Right.
Sure.
I think having schools, daycares, hospitals, healthcare facilities on there, whether it's an inclusion or exclusion zone, I think is important.
Social services.
Social services, yes. It's, they're pretty flexible, but I think having transit on there and then, I don't know if we have-
They're all licensed currently within the city, so the data is available to map them. Not a small project, admittedly.
Yeah. And then I think also, I don't know, maybe this is a public works thing, I know we do a fairly good job, in my lived experience here in Maine at least, a pretty good job of plowing Maine arterials and sort of what we designate as like pedestrian corridors. And I think having that to sort of influence how we think about this could be a really handy tool. Parks, I think, would also be good.
Yeah.
Or, or sort of large swaths of nature land that are not, you know, that are, are zoned away.
Like gasoline bond or something like that.
Exactly. And locations of public transportation.
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay. All right. Does that give you guys enough on the?
Potential for restriction.
The potential for, for the, the overlay and, and all the, for, for the shelters? Is that sufficient?
Yeah, that's, yes, that's very helpful.
Okay.
So I guess just sort of thinking about going forward, it sounds like the board would like to have another workshop where you look at locations.
Yep.
And wherever you allow shelters, there'll be a conditional use. Are you wanting to discuss conditional use criteria this evening and whether you want to consider that or you want to wait until you've looked at locations?
Let's, let's wait until we look at the, at the map, I think. And I think we, at that point, when we've got a physical, we can really look at what we're, we're talking about. Then we can talk about a buff, you know, specific buffers and, and more. I think it, it's more, it's more easy. It's easier if we have the visual context that we can, we can refer to, I think. I think that would be my idea. Yes, Shanna?
I think it might be language, but while I'm happy with the conversation we've had, I would like to discuss under conditional uses, these additional items that you've named as additional standards for homeless shelters. And I think that conversation is still warranted tonight if others are game.
I would agree with that. I was going to say that I think this is, you know, sort of multi-dimensional chess, we kind of have to move all the pieces all at once. And I think, yeah, conditional use standards are going to be a longer term thing. And I can imagine that when we have the maps in front of us, we might think of, oh, you know, this doesn't make sense to be a district, you know, or a prohibition zone, this is more of a, a conditional use standard that we want to hold it to or vice versa. But let's get some ideas on the table without, you know, keeping the night too long.
One more question.
Sure.
Would it be helpful for the next phase for us to have some sort of definitions of different types of shelter facilities when getting into some of that discussion?
From, from the industry.
Yeah.
Yeah, from the industry. We could have-
Practitioners.
For the, for our next workshop, that would be, I think, very helpful. I mean, even if it isn't in final language form that we're going to use, it would be very interest, very informative.
Are we going to be getting into the problem that we've had in the past where we've had definitions for homeless shelters in the zoning ordinance and we've had definitions for them in the licensing ordinance? And we've tried to take as many out of zoning as we could and put them into the, the council's hands in the business licensing ordinance? And if you're saying, add, add these additional definitions, are we going to be right back into that same boat is my question?
I, I don't know if I know the full answer to your question, but it strikes me that, I'm not sure that we put the definitions in, but how does it help us to understand some of the conditional use criteria, to know some of the types of facilities that might be coming forward?
Right.
So it, I don't, I don't know if we'd be putting it in or if it belongs somewhere else, but for our thinking, it seems better.
Right, it might be just for, for our information, not necessarily to put into the-
And if I, could I jump in?
Sure.
It, it isn't necessarily that you would have to create definitions, so it might be as simple as a shelter serving less than X number of beds or people is allowed in this zoning district but not in that zoning district. That's not a definition.
Right.
That's, that's really part of our, like, land use table.
Okay. That, I think that, that's where we're, I think we're, we're going that way. Yep, Shanna?
I'm not entirely convinced that that's not addressable in licensing. So I think when you look at license, and I'm, I'm not trying to get more to live in our section, I want us to be using the same language as licensing, you know, it's referenced in the other sections, but it's not different as you just described. And I suspect highly that you will find that there is some different license, like, you could actually say, these are the 20 state of Maine licenses and this is for four people, this is for eight or less, this is for family, this is for recovery. And I think that you could use those definitions so that we're not saying 13 people. I think that it could align with licensing, live in licensing, and that it would inform our bed or family unit structure language and align with that. So for me, I don't know if the word definition is throwing us off, it's not about that, but it is the shared language that our, our codified language uses that matches the business licensing where so much of that should live. And I think you will find there is good standard governance and language for licensing at the state and federal level and that we should adopt that and then say, okay, this midsize shelter is six to 12 beds and let's use that and put in these restrictions for six to 12 or 12 and above.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, that's-
Yeah. And I'm not licensed, so I don't know.
Right. So, okay, so outdoor spaces.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd love to see them. I think that we, you already used language about valuing outdoor spaces, common spaces and community spaces. And we've done that well in our density and multifamily development. And I think like the standard that a human should have some space is one we've already set and everybody's human and we should apply it equally. And so I would encourage us to use that as a framework.
Right. Well, and, and the possi-, you know, the criteria, adequate outdoor space to accommodate the shelter capacity without crowding has been provided on site or, and in an inviting layout. Does that, yeah, that's a beginning. I mean, you know, we're not married to all this language, yes.
I completely agree. Piggybacking on what Shanna said of like, we've already established that this is something that's valuable. I think we've also established standards for how much per person.
And where it could be.
And where it could be and what it could be and what, what, what is leisure space? A parking lot is not leisure space.
Yeah.
I think it would be interesting to, yeah, see if, if we already have something on the books, we can just copy paste, give, you know, because like, sure, it's short-term housing, but it's still housing, right?
Yeah, sure.
People still have the same needs.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
So that, so that was a question that staff had. What I wrote there was a standard that is broad enough that there's flexibility, but it did cross my mind that the board could also be prescriptive and have a required amount, which would be a different way to apply that standard. And so that's a kind of a, a way to think about that.
Right. And again, you know, a family, a family of four in, in a home isn't going to need this, I mean, and a shelter that's got 60 people is not going to need the same type of outdoor space. You know? It, it, it just, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be manageable, you know, that type of thing. Shanna?
We've, like, again, we've done that work and I don't think that our, I personally wouldn't want to see us put in different recommendations for a different group of people. That doesn't, and, and I, and I say that very globally because there are places in which we've said, your childcare licensing allows childcare to not have the minimum state required of outdoor space if it's within X amount of walking distance to a park or playground and that that counts. Same?
Yeah.
Same. Is it the cycling room? Is it the pool room? Is it the community event room where they can hold their ber-, like, we've done this in multifamilies? It's the same.
Yeah.
And so my direction is like, please pull forward our existing language for where people live and how we meet their indoor and outdoor needs and give it the same level of flexibility we've adapted that language to provide.
Yeah.
And that's it.
Yeah. Yeah, there's no need to recreate the wheel, you know?
I, I think one place where that could have a little bit of a wrinkle, and I think it's been brought up, is around some of the behaviors that can make it challenging with this group of people in, you know, public spaces or, or things like that. And I think maybe what staff is going after with this a little bit is like providing an alternative space-
Yeah.
-for that type of activity, you know? If you have someone who, you know, uses nicotine to help cope with where their life is at, having them sit in the park and just smoke cigarettes all day is maybe different than having a smoking courtyard or something like that.
Yeah.
And so, we have what we have on the books, let's start with that and then maybe add a little extra spice in there.
Ask the professionals about what's missing.
Exactly. What else, what are we missing from this already predefined thing?
Okay. Views. Managing views into the site and into neighboring properties is important to provide privacy for both shelter users and neighbors without making the shelter property feel closed off. Possible criteria. Views into the shelter facility and outdoor gathering spaces are minimized to allow privacy to guests as are views into private residences and yards adjacent to the facility without creating a walled off and closed feeling to the site.
How do we, do we do anything around this for residences? We don't require fences.
Yeah, we've got-
Yeah, you do.
We've got view limits for dumpsters.
Got it.
Dumpsters, we also have, if, if it's a, a commercial use, abutting a residential use, we have certain criteria, trees, fences, there are, there are criteria. So I think that's possibly, probably where we should start is using those kinds of criteria.
Yeah. What would we do for a hotel?
Or, or, yeah, you know, like the, the storage units that were put on Strawberry Avenue, they abut residences on Landry.
Love it when you two fight streets.
So, yeah. Okay? So, all right, next. Building entrances, discussion. It is recommended that building entrances not be hidden or in blind spots, but should be clearly visible for users and the design should support the staff's oversight of the front of the building. Possible criteria. Main entrance is clearly visible from the access points into the site and easily identifiable.
We just, we just talked about this a couple meetings ago.
I have thoughts, yeah. Go ahead. Somebody else, anybody else? Dear God.
Just, yeah, I mean, I think for, for many, do, do we already have something on the books for this?
Well, I just, I can't reconcile that we want everybody to use a main entrance, that it's a visible entrance, that it's right up front, and we also would like these people to not be in the front and to be in the back and not visible by the neighbors and to not be an eyesore. And so like, well, how does that work? And so like, which, which is it we're prioritizing and to what end? So if this language, so like, building entrances right on the tail of views is killing me, I think, and I apologize, but if, if this is about safety and if it is about safety for the staff and their ability to minimize impact on neighbors, for example, then that is a very different thing than what is being kind of recommended here and how that feels very opposite of what's being named in like, let's consider views. And so if what you'd like is a main entrance that's accessible to emergency response services, but that you would like a primary use exit for the smoking courtyard and the dog walking and to be on a side street or on the back, then like, name that. Like, what's the intent? Because I don't really get the intent here. And if I'm understanding the intent here, it is opposite of the intent above and you can't have it both ways. And so for me, I think it's like, what's, what's the desire? And I, the desire that I've heard both in this room and in so many times previously is, we would like to ensure that the frequent coming and going of people who are a high need population and regularly use services doesn't disrupt the flow and feel and neighborhood vibe. And like, if that's the case, then ask for a primary use off of the side near the parking lot, which I don't know how much parking really matters either for this group of constituents, but I don't know what we're trying to solve here and so.[1769.54]
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I, yeah, I'm confused as well with, you know, we wanna keep it from.
Let's see, let's not see. Let's see, let's not see.
Yeah, you know, I mean, do, do we want him, yeah.
Is it safety or visibility?
While you were reading that, and if I caught it correctly, um, open front, um.
Not to be hidden or in blind spots.
Which, or blind spots, which makes sense. Um, but further down into that, there's something about easily identifiable.
But should be clearly visible for users, and the design would support the staff's oversight of the front of the building.
Okay. I, I thought it was something about easily identifiable. Is that vocabulary?
Not in this.
No, not in, not in.
Under the criteria.
Let me, let me reread it. It is recommended that building entrances.
Under the criteria.
Oh, that's possible criteria. So let me reread it. The discussion, it is recommended that building entrances not be hidden or in blind spots, but should be clearly visible for users, and the design would support the staff's oversight of the front of the building. Possible criteria. The main entrance is vis-, clearly visible from the access points into the site and easily identifiable.
Okay. Well, I was putting that into context with, uh, group homes, cause we're probably talking, probably a mix of, uh, more urban areas and residential, since this started with a lot of residential use. And, uh, for, for instance, along Pleasant Street, um, I'm thinking this may go back to the 1970s, or at least early 1980s.
Predicts me.
And, um, there's a group home, um, I believe.
Still there.
It's still there. I knew it as the Crowley, the building.
Never knew its name.
Um, they owned a lot of.
John F. Murphy home.
Uh, yeah, probably today. But I'm not sure if that was the case when.
I think it was back then.
Initiated, okay? And it was a lot of concern from the neighbors, but they've been a good neighbor ever since. There wasn't much for buffers. Uh, uh, there was very little trouble from the site. It is easily, uh, uh, what was the first phrase?
Uh, visible from the access.
Yeah, visible from the access points. It has a little bit of parking, shuttle, uh, personal vehicles of staff and shuttles can go through there.
But it's not easily identifiable as what it is. It's a, it's a home. It's, it's just a house.
And that's, that's where I was going. It's, it's not easily identifiable, but in other words, there's no sign in the front that says what this is.
Yeah.
Which is part of the reason that, uh, they're a good neighbor. And, uh, I, um, and I can tell you, uh, from living there since 1963, that, um, and when, whenever it did come into existence, uh, there's been no problem. I had more problems, you know, with, you know, what was happening with the traffic that was coming from behind the Ramada, uh, behind the Promenade Mall to the Shaws, up and down Pleasant Street, all the way to the Ramada. Now, there was more trouble there, and I'm a distance away from the Ramada. So, uh.
Right.
Yeah, that, that particular criteria, I, I wouldn't wanna see it easily identifiable in that sense.
If I could just jump in, cause I did write this and, and tell you what I was thinking. When it comes to the buffers, the thought was if there's an outdoor gathering space, whether people are walking their dog, or they're just sitting and trying to be in a quiet spot instead of being with everybody else, or they're actually recreating or, or, you know, enjoying a picnic, um, and having like lunch served outside as opposed to inside that day. The thought is that you want there to be, um, you know, where they have views, but the views aren't right into the neighbor's backyard, but there's also some buffering. Um, when it comes to the front door and the main access, it's more about somebody coming into the site, whether it's, um, a, a building that's very close to the road, like on Lisbon Street, or whether it's something set further back, like something on Molson Way, right? So it could be more of that suburban development, or it could be something that's more urban. You want, if there's multiple doors, you wanna know what the main entrance is. It wants to be clear. It should be prominent. It should be identifiable. Um, whether that's where the numbers to the building are, and it's clear by other things, it doesn't have to have a big sign that says shelter. Same thing when you drive in, or when somebody's dropping off with a taxi or other service, that they, it's a clear drop-off spot. It's a clear main entrance, and there's not multiple doors. Or, um, if somebody's rehabbing a building, they don't have this weird door in the alley that you have to go to. Like, it's, they've done the remodeling, so it's clear that this is the door.
Right.
So that's kind of was the thought process. It's okay if that doesn't seem important to the board, and it's not something that you want to include as a criteria, but that, that was kind of the, the thinking behind it.
Alex?
So, um, I'm going back to our discussion of like, not all shelters are the same. And I wonder if these two particular, you know, questions around views and building entrances, you know, we, I, from what I know, we don't require a, a new-built house to put up a fence. And if we're talking about a shelter being a single-family house for one family transitioning, you know, if we wouldn't require a fence of a permanent resident in a house, why would we require that of a family in the exact same condition? So, thinking about it from that perspective, I, I wonder if that, and then also, you know, the entrance, I think it's hard to be prescriptive, maybe to, you know, a degree where we're talking about, you know, pedestrian access, bicycle access, all these things. I think it is a good idea to say that like, yeah, it's clear what the entrance is to the building. Do we do that for other building forms? Do we have that in other parts of our code when we talk about?
Yeah. The only one that really jumps to mind is for accessory dwelling units, we have a requirement that the, um, entrance be accessory in nature, so that the principal, um, portion of the dwelling has the clear front entrance, and that the accessory dwelling is a side or rear entrance, or is just less prominent.
Yeah. And I wonder if this would be like a per, a use case thing.
Yeah, I think, I think this should be more on a per-use. You know, these two really would be more like a Schmengiz, okay? A larger shelter, where it, you know, there's a lot of people, there's gonna be a lot of traffic. I, I don't think they really apply to what we're thinking in the smaller shelters of, of a family unit or that type of thing. So I, yeah, I think we, maybe we can do some more discussion, but I think we can do it when we.
Intensity of use.
Yeah, I, I think it has to do with the intensity of use, so I think.
And intent. So the only thing that I would contribute before moving on is.
Yeah, and, and.
I would hesitate to have any requirement, and I didn't hear, like, I didn't hear one about requiring that it's labeled as a shelter. I did hear it as labeling the building entrance to the shelter. But I, I, you know, with domestic violence shelters that I've worked with before, they don't label anything.
No.
And they're definitely not labeling the entrance. And so like, maybe it's a discussion point for the board and the guidance is offered there, but I'd be very hesitant to have any criteria be explicit about it for, for use.
Right. And, and because, you know, what, what Michael was talking about is a John F. Murphy, one of their, um, one of their group homes. Well, there are a whole bunch of them in the city of Lewiston, and they're basically just houses.
They're just neighbors.
They're just neighbors, and I mean, they're, they're all over the place. There's one at Teakwood Knoll, there's one on, on Montello, there's one on Pleasant Street, and, and there's a whole bunch of others that, that they're just a home. It, it's not a, you know, commercial unit. So I think we've gotta be very careful about how we label these things, because, uh, like Shannon says, with the, the, um, uh.
TV shelter?
Yeah. It's, you know, the, so we, we gotta be careful. So, okay, so let's move on.
Moving on, yeah.
Moving on. Access, discussion. Adequate consideration should be made for the types of access needed for the shelter discuss, including pedestrians, bicycles, and vehicles, and many, many of which may not enter the site such as service and, uh, delivery vehicles, emergency vehicles, taxis, private cars, dropping off. Pathways to the main entrance should be accessible to all, and consideration for older populations, those with mobility devices and guide animals should be given. Possible criteria. Special access considerations should be made for the facility based on the typical user group. Access for pedestrians, bicyclists, and users of mobility devices is adequate for the occupancy of the facility. Provisions for the turnaround and drop-off of motorized transportation services is adequate and safely designed, and I think this kind of fits with the views and the building entrances. It depends on, you know, if we're talking a big shelter like Schmengiz, or we're talking about a home, it, it, it just doesn't fit. I mean, you're not gonna have a, I don't have a driveway where the, the fire engine can turn around in my driveway. I mean.
And, and I think this is flexible in that you can make a determination that in the language, this only applies to such and such shelters, right? Shelters above this size.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that, really, when, when you're thinking about this, I was not thinking about an eight-bed shelter in a residential area at a house. That's not what this was written for.
All right. So this is, so that's, you know, so we can, you know, yes, this would be a definite criteria for a large shelter where, like Schmengiz, where they have, to have ramps and, and, you know, fire engine turn around and all that other good stuff. Le-, yes, my dear.
I just, uh, yes. And I think you're right that you, it, it felt like this was written with a large shelter in mind, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
But I do think fundamentally, I think that it is helpful regardless of shelter size to name this as the criteria we'll consider, and your application must address how this criteria has been met for your typical user group, which you must identify. So if it is, like, we regularly have in front of us, um, housing for a senior population, and in that, we're making significant considerations about mobility and access, and so, I mean, I, I just think naming, I think, I think you named the right stuff, Shelley, and I think those are the right things, no matter what size. I don't think that we should say you can't, or you shall, or you must.
Yeah.
I think it's like, this is the discussion the board will have. Your application must address these points, and there's other places where we've done that, but I think you nailed the right points.
Right. So can you go? I have to go.
Yes. I can. Anyone else on this topic?
I was gonna say, yeah, I think, thinking about all of these various topics in terms of like, the thou shalt's, we have a number attached versus a, we'd like you to think about this before talking to us. Maybe for our next discussion, if we can sort of parse it out into those two things so that when we're talking about areas, and we're talking about intensity, and then we're talking about the thou shalt's, and we're talking about the you should think about, it's, um, we can start to mesh that all together. Cause again, I think all this stuff kind of, you know, it's, it's not a, a one-way push in terms of the direction on this, you know, they're all being sort of influenced by each other.
Yeah, that's right. Anyone else on access before we move to trash? So trash, um, is about ensuring, and I would wonder if this is again, a place where size is a reference in terms of what you thought about, like, two trashcans on a Tuesday morning picked up by the city versus a dumpster. But, uh, to ensure that there's adequate provisions for trash on site, that trash and debris will not be left or entered the right-of-way, and that the criteria might include a waste management plan, um, is addressing those items.
I was gonna say, this one felt like it was sort of creeping into, into licensing land a little bit, uh, with the management plan and things like that. But certainly agree that like, you know, a, a sheltered area for trashcans, adequate, you know, waste disposal in common spaces, like, these are good things. I think that's good. But I think we might wanna think about how much we get into like.
We have historically required waste management plans for multifamilies of a certain size and density, which includes storage, hiding of the dumpster or trash removal area, and access to throughways by.
Yeah.
Large trucks that remove dumpsters. And so I think this is a space again where it's size, and, and we do weigh in on those when it's big enough.
I think that's where I'm going with this. It's like, yeah, let's, let's use those tools. This is a multifamily situation. Let's use those tools.
Yeah, but all that's gonna change anyways when this new trash pickup system comes into play.
Well, I mean, it won't for a hundred-bed facility that doesn't get city stuff and needs its own dumpster, and then we'll still need to see that the dumpster's there and the dumpster's screened, and that the truck can get in and out with the dumpster and load and unload it. And those are the same considerations that we make for denser multifamily properties. And so see what we have for language and requirements around that, and, and maybe even take some indication of what the density or size is that starts to trigger some of those differences. Cause like, I can't imagine a waste management plan for a two-family townhome, eight-bed facility, nor a dumpster. Like, right? And so I think it's another one where it's about, and I do think that there's consensus around just pulling forward any existing direction or language that kind of looks for equity in terms of how we treat where we house people in denser areas.
Yeah. And practicality too, in addition to the equity. You know, we've already done the work. We've already sort of figured this out a little bit, so let's start with that.
Sounds good.
I did want to, um, part of my thought process with this was thinking about nuisances that are common. And so if somebody, if, if a project is going through development review, we already have a criteria related to adequate trash pickup. Um, this was getting more at how would they handle, um, litter on-site, right? It was more about that, so making sure that there's adequate, regular inspection by staff to pick things up, like managing the sidewalk and the curb in front along the street, and how they're handling that area. And hopefully, if they're providing an, an open space area, then that will help with keeping that sort of stuff out of the public way. So that was, that was really more the thought process I had for, for that.
Well, I'm hearing on both sides of me, that's licensing, and I think that that's right, and is part of the, like, the, what's the waste? Is staff checking the bathrooms every three hours as somebody end of shift looking outside? Like, we're not, I don't wanna see that plan, and seeing that plan's not gonna really influence my decision, because we can't hold them accountable, and we can't know what they're going to do. And so I think the things that are concrete, is there a trash room that holds trash and recycling for the weekly pickup? Like, we've looked at that, like, we can look at plans for that, but I don't know how we would actualize recommendations on, on enforcement, whether it's their enforcement or the city's enforcement, and the city has enforcement around debris. And I think we have to rely on existing code enforcement for that, is my personal opinion.
I think so. I think so. Absolutely. Okay. Hours. Again, we're talking large shelters, not, um, not the, the little ones. Discussion, hours of operation may be impacted by city licensing or funding sources, or set entirely by the shelter operator. Consideration needs to be given to the proposed hours, open and closed, and how these hours will impact neighboring properties and how the applicant plans to address those impacts. Possible criteria. Hours of operation are compatible with the neighboring uses or will not create nuisance in the neighborhood. Not, that, that's not gonna happen. Consideration has been made for how guests will get services and how they can congregate during open and closed periods in a way that will not impact adjacent uses. I think this is definitely licensing and not a, um, a planning code.
Yeah.
Uh, but that's my opinion.
We do, we do, I think, think about this a little bit in planning when like, will we put a, you know, 24-hour bar in a residential neighborhood? We probably won't.
Peak Dunkin' Donuts flow times for traffic, for example.
Yeah. Yeah. And so I think maybe there's like a little bit of that, but I, again, I, I think to what you just said about this is a licensing thing. I think we wanna make sure that we aren't getting too much into the, into the details. But I think having something where it's sort of like, you know, um, I'm trying to think if there's like another use type that's kind of gonna have this, this issue. Like, how do we think about hotels, you know?
Well, one of the kind of typical conditional use permit examples would be a drive-through restaurant, right? Or the Dunkin' Donuts. So if you have like the little loudspeaker that people order, like making noise at 11:00 at night, and you've got the big lights over it, like right next to somebody's yard, I mean, hours of operation matter for something like that.
Right.
So, um, that was why I raised it as a discussion point, um, and I'm not necessarily saying 24-hour operation is worse, that's probably better than one that closes, and then suddenly people are just kind of left out, um, for a period of time. So, but, but worth the discussion at least.
Okay. Yeah. Well, and I'd love to participate in the discussion before we move on. So if, again, if we go back to the definition, the definition of homeless shelter, so like Trinity isn't a homeless shelter. If you look at this definition, it's saying overnight. What's overnight? Six hours? 12 to, 12 to 6:00 AM is good? Like, so, I mean, there's, so there is a, like, a little bit of wiggle room in the definition, and I'm not arguing for it to be more prescriptive or explicit, but I think what we've heard historically, you know, we've got a number of shelters that release people in the day, that release people in the day, are only open overnight, and it is that one-time surge flow that is concerning, that this is like maybe seeking to address. Likewise, we've had warming shelters that had what I, with restrictions and no offense, but what I would say is weird hours. Like, it's cold before ten PM, but they couldn't enter until ten PM, so they're waiting outside to enter for a couple hours until ten PM rolls around, and then eight AM comes around, and they're on the street again, and so I think the ideal is a twenty-four-seven for like a true homeless shelter, but I, I think that's what's being gotten at here, and I wonder again if the, if the issue is around hours of operations, or if it's the plan for what you do with your clientele when you're not open. And if that's the, that's the nut that we're trying, because I just like, what's the intent?
I think that's what the intent. What's the, what's the why? I think that's the intent of, of this, is because we've had so many issues with the ones at the Armory and, and the, uh, the Ramada where people, and, and like you say, the other, the other shelters local downtown, where eight AM, you gotta get out, and, and so, um, yeah.
I would almost say that if we were gonna use this as a gating thing from purely a land use standpoint, that really the question is, is like, will you require the residents of this facility to leave at any point during the day? Not being prescriptive about what times or any of that, or like overnight versus, you know.
Yeah.
Like, I would almost be more inclined to say that a twenty-four-hour facility will have less impact.
Yes.
From what we're all bringing up is like problems that we've seen.
Yep.
Than, uh, a limited facility, and so maybe that's, that is simply the question on the application, where, again, there isn't a right or wrong answer, we, you just need to sort of tell us, are you planning on kicking people out based either on weather or time or, you know?
And are they all getting on a shuttle and going to a resource center? Because then maybe that's fine too, but like, address it.
Yeah.
Yeah, te- tell us about what you're doing, but it's not a, we will approve this and we will not approve that.
Okay. All right.
Sorry, I'm on there.
No, no.
No, I apologize. It's also contextual, right? So if like, if we find an industrial site that is twenty-four-seven, there aren't residences nearby, uh, Duncan would be fine too, because there's no one bothered by the loudspeaker, then like, great, you do what you do, and whatever timeframe it has, and the impact to neighbors is minimal, and the use, release, surge of people, waiting of people, queuing of people is in alignment with the other uses nearby, then like, fine. Right, and so it's, it's just, like, I think whatever language gets proposed there should recognize the contextual placement of like nearby uses, and how like, uh, certain neighborhoods, it's like quiet at ten PM. And then there is other neighborhoods, it's like quiet at one in the morning, and then there's other neighborhoods where like, nah, it's, it's overnight, and everybody's working the whole time through, and maybe that's fine.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so I think, you know, district regulations, land use language, I think we've been discussing that as well. So I think we're pretty much
I feel like we did it.
giving you everything that, that we can, you know, uh, bring it back, and let's, let's, um, you know, let's talk about it. Okay?
So yeah, so just to sum up, it sounds like we're gonna, um, the board is asking to do a workshop specifically on location, we're gonna come back with some maps and some, um, key locations, so you can get a sense for buffers. Um, and then we're also gonna come back with some language around, um, conditional use permit, additional language specific for shelters.
And, and dividing them into sort of, uh,
Categories.
number requirements versus the
Or, yeah, service groups.
Yeah.
Right, you know, whether it be a family shelter, a, you know, a medium shelter that's ten individuals or arbitrary number, uh, that are not related, or, you know, whatever, whatever we come up with, but I think, and
And, and with that, just to talk about that really briefly, um, it sounds like the board would like us to explore what, um, state or federal licensing kind of levels have, but also, um, recognizing the state requirement that community living arrangements are eight or fewer people. Um, that was kind of where some of our language had come from, with thinking like, eight or fewer people in a residential district, it's really whether they're in recovery, whether they're in a homeless shelter, it seems like it's, it's a very similar.
Well, I mean, as we had that discussion on this, even as we like gave some examples of John Murphy homes tonight, there's a difference between a group home, where there are people who live together, of whom that's their primary residence, and it's not temporary.
Right, yeah.
And some of what you just offered, even the examples, and some of them rela- and like, your homeless shelter definitions all goes, gonna, gonna go back to that, but is it temporary or is it not temporary? And that is a fundamental dis- difference of, I'm either vested in my neighborhood, these are my neighbors, or I'm staying there with these people next door. And I think from the neighborhood concern, that's a really kind of defining feature, what you guys are talking about.
If I may, so a lot of it's also gonna go back to building code, right? So building code, uh, will differentiate these uses. When I talk about building code, the building code use, you know, which is going to trigger, um, change of use permits for a lot of these
Yep.
these shelters. Things that may be cost prohibitive, I, I get it, it may not be in your lane, uh, in your purview, but, you know, a lot of, of a lot of these places, these, that you're talking about, these small ones, you're, you're talking about the requirement for sprinkler system, fire alarm systems, that don't apply to the group homes. And so there, there could be some cost prohibitive, you know, actions take place, but what I'm getting at is the, the building code uses, you know, they, they talk about number of beds above this number, below this number, equate to this.
Right.
Are they, are they transient or are they non-transient? And so we can, we can definitely look back at, at those uses in the building code and, and try to match them up with, with what we're talking about here tonight.
And with licensing, that's a fun little crosswalk exercise, but I think that's right.
Yeah, because we don't want to establish certain things, and then all of a sudden, you, you know, the building codes are looked at, and oh, well, that doesn't work.
Right.
So we want to make sure that, that all the pieces mesh together. Did you have something, Michael?
Yeah, if I can put it together correctly. So when we talk about temporary use, uh, and hours of operation, talking about neighborhoods, small, uh, facilities, uh, like families, wouldn't want to see, uh, temporary use, meaning that you must leave the facility, like at eight AM, come back, uh, at night, uh, so there'd be a lot of coming and going. If it's a family facility, you wouldn't necessarily have to have an hours of operation.
Yeah, right.
It, it may be better, uh, just to meld right into that neighborhood, so that, uh, it appears to be just another, uh, home with, uh, with a large, large family, even if it's blended with more than one, uh, different family at the time.
Right, right. Yeah, you don't want to, uh, to, to put a spotlight on them to make them, make it look like them, they're, they're different.
Because if they're, if, uh, a mom and a dad and a couple of kids leaving at eight AM every morning, uh, strolling down the sidewalk.
Yeah, people are gonna start wondering what's going on. Yeah, 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 absolutely, okay, sounds good. Okay, no-name pond.
Uh, I, I have a question.
No.
Can you hand me this?
No questions.
This?
Yes.
Not my water bottle?
No.
I only brought one.
I, I wasn't sure if we were not gonna have a vote on the, uh, the homeless shelter means definition.
No.
No, I think with that, that
Not yet, anyway.
Well, we'll do that when we have the public, the public hearing and that kind of stuff, correct? I mean, yeah.
Well, just, just to put staff abreast, um, the bulk of it, um, I'm okay with, we get to the sentence, uh, where the term does not include federal, I need to have a definition of what the word term means in term of the, uh, the total paragraph. And then, no, I do have a little bit of concern with, uh, where I guess it's the same sentence that keeps on, uh, to say subsidy of temporary accommodations using existing homes, apartment hotels or motels or facilities that are deemed a local emergency, uh, by the city of Lewis and percent two. I, I, I wouldn't want, uh, the code to allow, uh, the city to, okay, we have an emergency, and we're gonna put one right here in the middle of your neighborhood, uh, type of thing.
Okay. Okay. No-name pond overlay district. Shelley, do you want to address it, or do I read it, or what do you want?
No, we're not reading that whole page, right?
Well, I, I was hoping I
Me too.
So, so the reason that this is before you, um, is that recently staff
And I thank you pe- people for being so patient with what we were discussing before.
The reason this is before you is we've had a couple of questions that have come up in the last year, year and a half for staff, regarding the reconstruction of existing facilities around no-name pond. We have a no-name pond overlay district, I can't say for sure that staff has always been applying it consistently. I don't know if that's the case. It also has shoreline zoning for some of the area, but the no-name pond overlay district is the whole watershed. So it's a much wider, broader, um, area than, than the amount that's shoreline zoning, which is only two-hundred-and-fifty feet around the lake. So in any case, when staff recently was looking at this in relation to a camp that had burned down, um, and where they were looking to rebuild the camp, we identified the fact that in the no-name pond overlay, um, no structures are allowed to be constructed within a hundred feet of the lake. We didn't see in the language the type of exemption that we would want to see for like rebuilding an existing structure, or allowing, if shoreline zoning allows the reconstruction, um, then that would be fine. We didn't feel that there was enough flexibility in the language, um, because it also states that if it, um, is in conflict with another portion of code, the stricter would apply. So even though shoreline zoning would allow the reconstruction, the no-name pond overlay, um, which is Lewiston-specific, um, seems to be more, uh, strict. We think that that was an oversight when this was written, that this was intended for new construction, but we, again, you, you know, don't have, um, language that clearly states that. So as we looked at this, um, and decided we were gonna bring this forward to the board for discussion and for clarification in the language, we also identified a few other things we wanted to bring forward. Um, the second is that there isn't a provision in that language for, um, you know, if we were to allow the reconstruction of, of a structure, are we going to require it to be the exact same size, or would there be an allowance for a slight expansion? In shoreline zoning, there are situations where people are allowed to expand the structure by a certain amount. Um, so that's a question that came up, because we did have, we have a second, um, building that someone is looking to, uh, demolish and rebuild with a better foundation, and they're looking to do a hundred-square-foot, um, larger size, like it's about a fifteen-hundred-square-foot camp, they're looking to put a sixteen-hundred square foot in. So that, since that's already a question before staff, we wanted to have you look at that as well, the possibility of doing small expansions. And then the third thing was, as we, um, talked to engineering staff, uh, about this, and, um, looked at kind of current condition of the lake, so the whole, sorry, this is like the Cliff Notes version of, of what I'd written. This was written twenty-five years ago, the purpose was really lake protection, eliminating sources of phosphorus into the lake, which is typically overland flow of water that's running off and bringing soil into the lake or dissolved, um, uh, phosphorus. Uh, and also subject systems are kind of the two most common, um, sources. So, uh, there are ongoing, um, efforts, um, for lake protection. Phosphorus, once it gets into the lake, typically, it, it's a, you know, if you are a gardener, you know it's one of the three, uh, components, it's typical, and fertilizer is typically the limiting agent, so if you're gonna get an algal bloom, it's because there's enough phosphorus available in the lake to allow that. The algae, when it dies, the decomposition causes the oxygen to be used up in the water. Less oxygen means you have fish that will potentially die off, and you won't have, um, that oxygen, um, and, and your cold water species won't survive. So anyway, sorry, that was kind of a
Cliff Notes, huh?
The Cliff Notes, yeah. The discussion was, if we're going to allow, um, you know, there are some protections in here about reducing phosphorus going into the lake. One of the best ways to eliminate phosphorus sources from new construction or, or from development is to make sure that the water that's coming off the land, off the roof, off the driveway, is going into the groundwater and not going directly over land into the lake. So you want it to be taken up by vegetation, you want it to be percolating through stone and into the soil and down into the, into the, um, the soil, um, profile. So, just, the suggestion from engineering was to require people who are building a new, um, or re, you know, remodeling, building in addition, or, um, rebuilding their camp at the same time to put in a filter strip for the roof runoff, potentially for the driveway, but certainly for the building, require them to put in a little bit of planting. It's a fairly low-tech, um, easy-to-design system, relatively low-cost install, certainly if you're rebuilding your camp, that's a, that's a minor expense. So that was a discussion of a way that we could help increase, um, protecting the lake. Right now, the lake is still considered at-risk, twenty-five years ago, it was on the state's at-risk list. It has seen conditions worsen a little bit over time. Um, the tw- to, you know, last summer, the rain events were, were really dramatic, and so there was a lot more runoff that went into the lake, and they have started to see increased algal bloom activity. So, um, there is still concern here, which is why staff isn't proposing that we really broaden what we're asking for, for, um, for allowances, but, um, we think that this will help resolve situations that people have with current property, um, to be able to, to rebuild what they have. Um, and then i- if there's an interest in allowing small expansions, then you can entertain that as well.
So, basically, you're looking to fix our overlay district so that it, it is more in line with the shoreline zoning? Or shore, shoreline, whatever.
Yeah, so you could kind of go a couple directions with this. So right now, the language states that you can't build a structure within a hundred feet of the lake unless it's a water-dependent use, like a dock, or we would consider like stairs to get into the water, to be that. In shoreline zoning, it also prohibits constru- construction of structures within a hundred feet, but it does allow the reconstruction or replacement of existing structures. They have to set it back, um, to the maximum extent practicable, but if there's a setback from the road, and, you know, if their lot is small enough or there's other circumstances, they can still build closer than a hundred feet. In both of these camp situations, they're built closer than a hundred feet today. So for built, you know, pushing it back further is, is either impossible in one situation or very challenging because of slopes in the other. Um, so you could say, uh, that you can reconstruct or rebuild exactly what you had. You could also say, unless shoreline zoning allows you to, you know, rebuild and just point to shoreline zoning and what they allow for expansion or reconstruction. So, there is degrees to which you could be more lenient than what the language is today.
Okay, Shannon?
So without having more information, I'd be in favor of exploring why the shoreline zoning alone isn't adequate. And if we could put in some of the additional engineer suggested solutions without a separate overlay, like, do we need to do that? And if the answer is, the only way to do that is with a separate overlay, then I'd be very interested in seeing amended language, that I'm, nothing about the overlay has changed the water quality in twenty-five years. So like, mm-mm, like, I don't know what that's doing, and I appreciate your passion for this subject tonight. I, I wanna, I want to see the right protections put in for the right reasons. I think anyone who buys or currently owns property in this community suffers a fire shouldn't have a complete loss of their ability to rebuild, and I think we should fundamentally address that, and I think if it's about, like, I, without, I, we haven't ever reviewed it, I don't have the base of knowledge that I do on the other topics tonight, so I, I think it would take seeing more, but I don't, what is the difference between the two? What is, what is currently the overlay district doing that's not achieved by the shoreline? And what is in that that goes above and beyond the engineers recommended changes? Because I would like to make sure rebuilding is done. If there is some appropriate limit and measure that's already being used on a small expansion, I'd like to see that. And I'd like to see us protecting the water quality in a reasonable way, knowing that what has been in place hasn't alone solved it. And so let's be targeted about the solution and, and match it. And maybe that's achievable in the district, but with a change to the district, maybe the district's not necessary. I don't know what current tools we have and what those options look like, but that's the direction I'd love that conversation to go in when you come back with stuff. Yep, Michael?
Yeah, um, yeah, I, I agree with everything Shannon said with regards to allowing expansion and replacement. Need to be as lenient as possible, where the code allows. I, I guess Shannon covered it by asking for what's contributing to the fact that it's not improving. Now, I was gonna ask specific questions, anybody doing farming, uh, around the perimeter of the lake? Where obvious, uh, the runoff, uh, coming from that operation tends to do this, we know that.
Yeah.
Uh, from what's happened to Sabatys Lake over the years. That's a big contributing factor, because I, I don't think, uh, replacing a foundation or expanding a foundation a little bit is going to contribute to any increase in, uh, phosphorus. It, it's, it has to do with the vegetation, the decay of the vegetation, uh, the nitrogen and everything else that, uh, occurs over the natural processes that run into a, a body of water, which causes that, that episode that we very much don't like.
Right. My, uh, Roger, you had?
Right. Roger, you had?
Which makes more sense, having the shoreline or the overlay?
So if I can step back and try to explain this a little differently. So I mentioned that the overlay is for the entire watershed that's within Lewiston. It doesn't include the portion in green because we don't have control over that. So there are other protections within that overlay that are unrelated to what we're talking about tonight. There's fertilizer usage and limiting fertilizer. Now granted, we're not going out door-to-door and seeing what fertilizer is in people's garages. But if TruGreen is driving up into someone's yard, then we could enforce against something obvious like that, right? There's limitations on how much lawn can be developed in a, on a plot of land like at somebody's yard. There's requirements for septic systems that go in, that there be a greater distance between the septic system and the limiting factor, which is either groundwater or like bedrock, so that there's just less likelihood of failure. And then there's also a requirement, this is outside of the 100 feet because we don't allow structures currently within 100 feet. When somebody builds a new structure, they have to go through the state's calculations of what the phosphorus export is going to be from the site. So the state has determined a phosphorus load that's acceptable for each lake in the state based on the size of the watershed and all the various characteristics for each lake. So they have essentially a budget, if you will, for what a development can create for phosphorus export, which would be, it would be your roads, your lawns, your driveways and your roofs that are creating export, the areas that are still going to be trees and shrubs. Would, you know, the coefficient used for the runoff from those is, you know, much less. So it requires, for example, let's say someone was going to do a six-lot subdivision and there's a small road going in. They would be looking at the acreage of land that's in their project. They would be looking at the acres of lawn that they're outlining and creating around each building envelope, the amount of acreage of each driveway and the roads and using those coefficients that the state has put together to determine what their phosphorus export off the project will be. And then comparing that to what the allowance is based on the amount of acres of their project. If they are over the allowance, then they have to do certain things to get it down. So...
Would we be considering that formula as we review the recommendations in the next round?
So I guess what I'm trying to explain is shoreline zoning is for a 250-foot area and is specific to whether you can cut trees, whether you can build things. It doesn't get into these requirements for new construction that are for the whole watershed, where a developer has to make decisions like making the road less wide, having shorter driveways, allowing people smaller lawn areas and so forth.
So the overlay district is giving more restrictions?
Yes, and giving it to a much broader area to provide greater lake protection.
Okay.
Then why have lakeshore versus overlay?
I think shoreline is...
Shoreline is state.
Is mandated. So shoreline is mandated by the state. And we've created this additional overlay for the lake for the, to protect against the phosphorus because of its threatened status.
So where the city is putting more restrictions than just the shoreline zoning?
I understand that. But the thing is, is I'm looking at people that own property now that are in the lakeshore provision that can't do anything because of what's mandated by the state. In other words...
No, the state would allow it. It's our overlay that restricts it within that 100-foot buffer.
Correct.
Right. So we're the ones making those points challenging.
You can't do that. And it's to protect, it's to protect the lake.
But it's not doing anything to protect the lake because the houses already been there. I mean, nothing is going to change other than the fact that they're going to put a foundation.
I heard Shelley say that's the part they would like us to change as we consider this, should we choose to vote to initiate a change tonight.
So we're looking to allow these things?
That's what I'm saying. The thing is, is that, you know, that makes more sense...
Absolutely.
In regards to the existing families that are there.
Yes. Yeah. I mean, what we're looking to do is not to make, to add more restrictions. We're looking to give permissions so that this young man can tear down his camp and put a foundation and build a building, a home that they can live in.
Under the same footprint?
The same footprint or adding 100 square feet or whatever the allowed percentage would be. So this would give them the permissions to do what they want to do. As opposed to if we leave it the way it is, they can't do that. They're stuck with the ratty old camp.
I'm hearing consensus on initiating.
Yeah. Oh, Alex, we'll let him give his two cents and then we'll, I think we want to do an initiation.
I think it does make sense. Yeah. We should definitely initiate discussion on this. Maybe let's just do that first and then I can have my comments. Does that work?
I would love for you to finish your comments so that this could be the final action of the evening.
Final action of the evening. Hopefully, we'll see. So I think allowing for replacement of a structure that's non-conforming makes a lot of sense and that's something that we historically do. I think, in my mind, that replacement process is also an opportunity to make improvements. You know, I think to Roger's point, to everyone else's point, like, you know, we've had...
The engineer's point.
To the engineer's point, you know, hasn't been too much change here. But I think, you know, holding people to a standard that it's like new construction for new construction on the same footprint, I think makes a lot of sense in terms of some of the other, you know, things that you're putting in the septic system, whatever that is.
Right.
I think I'm a little more hesitant to allow expansion. Not so much that footprint causes an issue. You know, maybe there's a little more impervious surface. I think that can be managed. I think I would be a little worried about like intensification of use. You know, if that extra 20% expansion is another two bathrooms or something like that.
Well, yeah, but it's only 100 feet.
No, that was an example. A percentage. By shoreline zoning.
Right.
And details that we would discuss.
We could discuss after.
So just throwing that out there.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
But let's do our motion.
Okay. Did you have any questions?
Totally in favor of moving forward with this.
So I would entertain a...
I'd like to make it.
A motion. Well, please do.
I'd be overjoyed to make a motion to initiate code amendments for the No Name Pond Overlay District pursuant to Article 7, Section 4 and Article 17, Amendments, Section 5.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Michael Marcon?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Alex Pine?
Yes.
Penthea?
I'm sorry, I've lost your last name.
Burns.
Burns. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Lucy Bisson? Yes. So now we'll have the discussion to make the changes. Okay? And that will be a public hearing. So they'll let you know.
Sign up for the alerts on the city's website for the planning board agendas when they come out and then read them.
Okay.
It's very helpful.
Absolutely. All right?
Thanks for being here.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you for being here.
Thanks for sticking it out.
Yes, thanks for sticking it out. Okay, so the minutes will be ready for the next meeting. Are there any other, other business? In that case, I will, or...
I would just love a schedule review because I know we're a little wonky into the end of the year.
Oh, yeah.
So just...
I think my calendar's right, but I'm just checking in.
November 4th.
So just want to make sure we're all clear. Our initial, staff's initial intent was we were going to have this meeting tonight as a workshop.
Yeah.
And then on the 4th, have the public hearing for said information we discussed tonight. But it now sounds like we are going to have another workshop on the 4th, bringing you the maps.
Well, we have the mapping done.
We may not even have the mapping done yet. So that, so we're looking at another workshop.
And you have Election Day the next day, guys. Like a lot of your staff has Election Day. I mean, I think, I don't, one of the things that we've historically done that I think we have opportunity to improve upon in both council chambers and in the planning board is we have a discussion, but we don't invite the public into the discussion. And we call the workshop and we silence public comment. And then we have this broad discussion. Then we make you go do work. And then you have to come back and propose very concrete things to us and slam a public hearing into it. So we don't actually have like a revision period. And it burns one of our two public hearing sessions and brings us back to the drawing board sometimes. And I think that there has been great times where we've engaged the public or allowed public comment. So if next time, whether it's November 4th or a different date, you're coming forward and saying, this is what we learned in our research from professionals. This is what the licensing language looks like. Here are the maps. We'd love to have a discussion about this suggested criteria. Is it right? Do these buffers feel right given this? I think that's a place in which the public should be invited into that dialogue. And when we call it a workshop, we figure out your language. But like, we don't allow that much like we did tonight. And so there isn't an exchange. It replicates the process for us. It replicates the process for you. And so I just want to identify that like, I would love to have further discussion. I don't need final things proposed to me next time. I think this is what we learned. Here's some updates. Let's invite the public into mapping with us and give that an opportunity for you. And that is separate from the official public hearing of the official proposed language, which we are expected to vote on. And we've never really done that middle part well. And I think there's an opportunity there. And I think that our community has been divided and actively engaged.
And we're talking specifically on the shelter, not No Name Pond.
I mean, yes, I would say there's members of the public who would love that. And I think like parsing these out, can we do one at a time? Because they're really big topics and there are impassioned people for both of these. And I think, I think it just like muddles the nuance of us understanding very different uses, very different populations, very different needs, very different areas of Lewiston's geography and being like, districts are districts. Let's just get this. And I don't think that's right. And I don't think it serves the public or your use or our use. And so like pick one, drill at it. And maybe, maybe there's some of this you can get done for November 4th for the No Name Pond Overlay. Great.
Right. Maybe we can have a public hearing for, on the 4th, for No Name Pond.
Yeah.
But a discussion, a workshop on, on the shelter. Because I think we really need to do some more work on the shelter stuff.
Could we do the No Name Pond first so that those people can come?
Yeah. Their house done?
Yeah, yeah. Let's, if we're doing No Name Pond and the shelter on the 4th, can we do them definitely separately? And do No Name Pond first?
And if they are two separate days that, and it is easier for you to like, here's the, there's got to be crosswalks already done of No Names, Shelter, I mean, their overlay and their regular ones. So like, whatever's easiest for you to move forward. But I just don't restrict yourselves or us or the public in the format of which we move forward. Because I don't think you're going to, you're not. Not because you're not amazing, but because it is impossible to nail the shelter in the first run. And, and when we get, if we spend two rounds iterating that and then we open it up to the public, we're going to learn something. And we're going to iterate it again. Could we maybe do all the learning upfront and then finalize together? So free yourself of that.
Right. Yeah. And maybe in, in the agenda or the notice that you send, it's not a public hearing, but we will listen to the public.
Public workshop or...
Yeah, we will have public, we will accept public comment or whatever, however you want to phrase it. But I think we really need to allow the public to speak. And that way, we can merge some of the stuff that they, you know, because public comes up with some really good ideas.
Kind of with the Riverfront Island Master Plan. Like there was an engagement session that we had that like met our abilities to say it's a meeting and we're all meeting together in the pub. But I think there's some engagement ways to do that. And I think it'd be highly valuable.
Yeah, I think so.
I would think in the spirit of a workshop, you can sort of designate, this is where, this is where your voice needs to come in.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then be able to have some focused work time so that it's, it's got some structure to it.
Right. And not necessarily just at the beginning of the meeting or, you know, because sometimes as things become, get discussed, somebody has a bright idea. And, and so we really need to, to be flexible. And I'm willing, you know, we're willing to be flexible. Yes, Alex?
I wonder if it would make sense, you know, since this is sort of a new format that we want to try out. And I think No Name Pond, like there will be discussion there. And there's a concern around time crunch. Could we workshop this workshop format for No Name Pond on the 4th? And see how it goes, you know?
Yeah. Or I would say...
No, I think No Name Pond, I don't think there's going to be that much of a discussion, I think.
I don't know what else is on that. We'll give staff a minute because I think this part will be important and they won't just want to hear it played back in the recordings. We'll just wait.
Sorry, we're having a sidebar over here.
That's okay.
No, it seems important.
Okay. Sorry, we were just discussing meeting schedules. So are folks available on November 4th and 18th? Can we just kind of get a show of hands for availability?
I think so.
I think I have it on my calendar.
Those are our regular days and you just swipe one off the calendar at one point, right? Like those are the same, that's the normal.
Well, it was the 11th and the 25th. 11th is Veterans Day. So we just sort of moved them up so it would be 4th and 18th.
I'm good with the 4th and the 18th.
I'm good with both.
We'll, we'll confirm after we've looked at kind of how this is going to come together, whether we're only doing one meeting in November or two and which day it's going to be.
Yeah, I'm available for both.
What we were discussing when you were sidebarring is Alex is suggesting, and I think it's a great suggestion, that if it is easier to try the workshop format, and I don't know what other applications might be coming before. I don't pretend this is the only business of, of planning. But if we were able to pilot a workshop approach with the No Name Pond discussion on the 4th, give yourself the time to both plan and get the information needed for the shelter and then regular business outside of those two. So we don't have to have like just a workshop session or just do both overlays. Like I think to Penthea's point, there's some structure that we could put into that meeting. So like 30 minutes as an engagement period and discussion and structured and we take on other normal business. But I do think two days will be necessary. But it's okay to pace yourselves. And we think the No Name Pond one might be the easier one to start with to see how that process goes.
I don't think any, there's going to be that much discussion.
I was going to say, are you looking for another workshop or a public workshop type meeting for the No Name Pond? Or are you looking for us to just bring forward staff's recommendations?
We need another workshop for, for No Name Pond. I think we, we had a good consensus that we all feel that we should do the, the less restrictive items, allowing people to...
Staff can bring forward recommendations for a public hearing for that?
Yeah, I think, I think that one we can do a public hearing, but we need to do the workshop-y thing for, for the shelter. Absolutely. Absolutely. How does that work? Okay? All those in favor, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could I ask a favor of the board?
Yes.
For those that are willing, we need to move the voting.
Yeah.
You couldn't have backed in.
Yep, we can do that.